Sheriff, thank you for the base of prayer.
Heavenly Father, God, we come before you tonight, we thank you, God, for everything, God, you've done for this county, we pray, God, for our supervisors and all the people in the county, God, tonight's got many concerns, we just pray, God, that everything, God, be done in decency and order, thank you, God, most of all, for being our Savior, may come away on the cross if we can have salvation, lead us now, guide us, protect us, and use us, God, to do your will, thank you, God, for every blessing, God, that you gave us in Christ and with great.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I should lead this, good leader.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would call the main witness, Lee County Board Supervisor, regular meeting board, first order of business, we've done a public hearing on a special use permit request. Lee County Board Supervisor will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, May the 20th, 2025, 6:00 P.M., General District Courtroom at Lee County Courthouse, located in Johnville, Virginia. Solicited input on a special use permit. Lincoln Memorial University has applied for a special use permit to allow wastewater treatment plant in an A1 agricultural district, property is located in the Union Community and consists of plus or minus nineteen point three four acres from Wilton's Road, turn on to Beaver Brook Road, property is located on southwest of Beaver Brook Road, tax parcel number seven nine dash A dash six zero E.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to take away that we need to speak.
We need to go ahead and have the public hearing.
Sure.
Okay.
Good evening, Chairman. The planning commission met on this last month, there was some discussion about what would be served through bills, and Mr. Ricky Ellis, District One's member of the planning commission, raised some concerns about the amount that the plan would be paying for them. Jeff Cochran spoke from the lane group and presented everything to us, I don't know if he's here this evening, but, you know, he explained that essentially, the permit that's in place would allow for the plant to go in only up to three hundred thousand gallons per day, but the actual design build that they were going to have at this time would only handle a hundred fifty thousand gallons. Mr. Ellis's concern was how much that would leave the county. Mr. Cochran stated that LMU's main campus approximately requires seventy-five thousand gallons per day, and the veterinary school located here in the county is around thirty thousand gallons per day. Mr. Ellis did make a statement that one of the systems on that end could produce up to two hundred fifty thousand gallons per day of water, so he was concerned what this left of the county, that we weren't just doing this just for LMU. What Mr. Cochran explained was that they could expand it to double what they're proposing under the permits that they have in place through DEQ and other agencies.
Is there anything else you'd like to add?
Yeah, actually, I've got a lot that I can add to that. There was a meeting today at Winnebago, and I do appreciate Clint and all the work that he does, because all of that information coming out of that planning meeting actually helped us today. There was a misconception about what actually was going to happen with the total gallons per day that was going to go through that plant. The original design build for that was actually at the, what they call point three, which is three hundred thousand gallons a day, and there were three phases to that project, two of those phases was cut off to try to expedite getting this thing in, and because of that, there was a, the first phase was a hundred and fifty thousand gallons a day. So, there's an MOU that's drafted that has pretty much been agreed to by most parties, that MOU actually has to go to the PSA during their next board meeting, and they will choose to agree to that MOU with LMU on that. This is an exciting project that's been going since, what, about 2008, that will benefit the county greatly a number of years from now, so all the benefit is right off the bat, you know, because things take time to get done, but the infrastructure that will be laid with this will really help the county in the future. So, I do believe that when this is done, the MOU will be, will be agreed to, and all parties involved in this will be happy and it will serve Lee County well. I don't know that it's appropriate at this point to go ahead and take action on this until the MOU is in place, and there is some clarification on whether we want to do a hundred and fifty thousand gallons a day, or the three hundred thousand gallons a day at opening, but my understanding is, the way the thing was originally drawn through lane group is they were, they were going to go to the three hundred thousand gallons, and then ultimately that property could handle nine hundred thousand gallons through upgrades. So, capacity wouldn't be an issue for anybody at that point if we went ahead and upgraded. So, there isn't a lot of moving parts to this as it stands today, I think most of them, there is a bright light at the end of the tunnel where we're almost at the end, but until the PSA actually gets into that MOU with LMU and all of this, all the fine details are worked out, then I think we can do this and just not take action on this today and take action on it pretty quickly, because we will be adjourning to several budget workshops that we can handle that during the agenda then.
Starting next week.
Yes.
And could we get a copy of the MOU? I have a copy out of the box, yes.
Primarily, the planning commission's concerns mostly voiced through, drawn by Ricky Ellis was the, the amount who was going to be served, and I think Mr. Cochran did a pretty good job, you know, addressing their concerns and making them, one of the things that was confusing to them was where it's LMU and Lincoln Memorial University, so it's applying for special use, they own the property, we're sending a lot of, that's why they're the property owner, that's why they're applying for the special use. Ultimately, after discussion, the planning commission did vote赞成, they recommended approval.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the, they recommended approval at the point one five, and that has changed, I believe that will get changed in the next few days to the point three, the three hundred thousand gallons. I don't know if that would require it to go back to the planning commission, we might end up having to have a joint meeting at some point just to clear that one out.
We can debate and discuss that space. I don't believe where the special use would be for the treatment facility over the threshold of at least thirty thousand gallons is required a special use, so I don't believe that would necessarily trigger us to have to have another hearing, but we can clarify and make sure on that.
The big deal of this is, is I think we'll get it broken before the end of the year, and that's a project that's been coming for a long time, assuming that everything's agreed to and all of that.
Thank you, Clint. Anybody here to speak on that matter?
Next is proposed ordinance changes. Lee County Board Supervisors hold a public hearing on Tuesday, May the 20th, 2025, 6:00 P.M., General District Courtroom at Lee County Courthouse, located in Johnville, Virginia. Purpose of the hearing is to take public comment on proposed amendments to Chapter fourteen of Lee County Code Ordinance, better define potential code violations. If approved, the proposed amendments would change three sections as follows. Chapter fourteen dash sixty-four, remove waste definition language excluding volume of less than one cubic foot. Chapter fourteen dash sixty-eight, remove definition of residential property in order to include all property. Chapter fourteen dash eighty-three, change language from container to inside fenced property, concerning removing trash for convenience.
Mr. Chair, there was the committee that was put together to do these changes and to take a look at some of that code, this is, this is the proof that come out of those meetings, they are small changes, but they actually make a big impact on the way that code can be enforced, where, you know, now the way that it talks about, you know, if you're in a dumpster, you're actually physically removing stuff from the dumpster and off the side and that sort of thing, it just, it better defines that whole code. So, what I would like to do is, is get a vote to adopt, a resolution to include this into the ordinance, so that we can update the code appropriately.
Anyone here to speak on that?
No one can.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second, I'll vote.
All right.
Prove.
Hey, you want me to depart with the reports? I know that there's not a, there's not a lot in here for that, but the board did request that the EDA Director be here tonight, would you like her to speak or?
I'd say.
Sorry, I thought we were waiting on next morning.
Oh, yeah, we went ahead and she was kind of prepared, so I just.
Yes, if you'd like to come forward and speak, I'll meet.
I'll just give you a few updates. The EDA has shifted their focus of lending strategy, for the small business lending account, they set a cap at ten thousand dollars per loan for small business owners, that way that they could help finance more small business owners in the county instead of trying to borrow greater sums, because frankly, that's not available in the account, and kind of took the same footprint as the CETA seed capital grant, and that's ten thousand dollars limit as well. One thing we do is we provide letters of support for anybody that has applied for the seed capital grant, so that's kind of our way of supporting them in their application with the CETA, so a lot of times, if they're bringing that, they'll get ten thousand dollars for their business as well. I don't know if you all have any questions. One thing that we did this year is we applied with the CETA for tourism capital grant in conjunction with the Historical Society, we're going to have a new Civil War Trails marker, and that's going to be for the Battle of Jonesville, and it's going to be right across from Johnson Middle School, and so they didn't have the funding to supply the full amount for the installation, so we worked with the Historical Society for the local match, and then the CETA is providing the other half of that grant. We're continuing to seek funding to conduct the diligence studies such as the environmental studies to improve the site down at Constitutional Oaks, to make that more developed and more marketable as far as tier status for the EDP, and I have that list here if you want to see it, it's just all the different studies that are only good for two years, so anytime that two-year timeframe expires, you have to start that process all over again.
How close are you to getting that upgraded?
Upgrade to tier three.
I know we're needing to move on up to get things.
Right, those environmental studies would have to be completed.
Yeah, where we are right now, we ran into a little bit of hiccup when we were working together to get funding to get those studies done, and some unforeseen circumstances come up toward the end of the year last year, and it had to put that project on hold, most of that stuff is available through grant money and that sort of thing, so a lot of it we're having to wait until the new fiscal year hits before we can even get somebody to attempt to get somebody out of contract to get that done. So, you're, if we can get that done to the normal standard, I mean, probably get twelve to eighteen months.
You got time to say elaborate on what the plus side of all this is going to be for the county? I know you talked to some of us, getting that rating better.
Would you like to do that at any moment? You want to talk? We work hand to hand, so I didn't want to step on her toes as the EDA Director. The big deal of getting these things done is in order to get into that property with a proper road, where we have a crossover and that sort of thing, we already have an existing business in there that's having to bypass Constitutional Oaks and turn and come back, which is not a great situation to do. We have to get across what basically is a wetland, and in order to do that, there'll have to be a bridge built or some kind of structure to get across that wetland, to get over in there, and then that spawns a whole multitude of things that needs done because you're disturbing a wetland, and, you know, actually, part of that property is an hundred-year flood plain, so we have to deal with, you know, where we're going to put markers and how we're going to get a road in and out there. So, what we would like to do is that first, it's not the main interest, the main interest is closure of road seal, the secondary entrance into the, into that location, what we would like to do is get the study done as quickly as possible, and then go ahead while we're at the end stages of that, and try to seek funding to go ahead and get a road built up in there. And that would serve two purposes for any business that we can get to locate in there, well, actually, it'd be three purposes, if any business we can get in there, they have good access in and out, we're also going to tie in the existing businesses there, so they have good access in and out. And at that point in time that we can get the road built in there, it does have to be built to be off standard, but that will move us, if we can get some other stuff along with it, that would move us from a tier three to a tier four. The ultimate goal is to get to the tier five, and once you get there, then it's a lot easier to get a lot of state support to get something in there.
Another thing that we did is we removed the contract for services down at Constitutional Oaks with Lee McPherson, that contract is good till December 31st, 2026, and that is for access to the property, application of fertilizer, output of hay crop, and storage of hay, which the barn has been removed, so he doesn't have anywhere to put his hay now.
When did you renew that?
Sorry?
When did you renew that?
It was October 3rd, 2024.
And it's good through 2026?
December 31st, 2026.
Oh, but there's several people asking if they could be it on a height, and I learned that some of them have some time difference. Like, I'd like to go along here, I'll say, if I'll be here for today, if you want, that's taken to the board, you can talk through it, but. I do have one question, the four hundred and five thousand dollars that's in the EDA fund, what's the plan for that?
There is a project that we are working on that's really early in the stages right now of developing, that that money would be extremely useful for, that we're not able to talk about today, what the specifics.
Sure, and it's not, it's not Board Supervisor money, I get it, it promises that he just liked the property and the road seal.
But in both words, I, my understanding is, both words have to approve this expenditure.
They do, and it comes to us, but I'm just, there is something in the works with it, because there's some of this money that's sat here, it might move for a year now.
I will be honest, if we can get to this environmental study, the matching funds that you do with grants to try to get a road built in there, that would take us a long way. I'm holding out hope that we can find other sources of funding to where we wouldn't have to dip into that, but that's kind of the ace in the hole at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I need to report on tourism as well.
Go ahead.
Because I'm the tourism director too. We have a new RAC card, and that is courtesy of Part of Appalachia, we have relied heavily on them because we do not have a lot of funding, so they were gracious enough to do this at no cost to the county. We have not had a new brochure in 14 years, so that was a big accomplishment for tourism, we have QR code on there where you can scan, and it takes you to our new website. We are trying to be active with our social media, we have a Facebook page, I love the Lee, so everybody please like and share. We participated with the Boomtrace 250 Relay, we met the hikers at Axe Handle, the ceiling, when they arrived at their destination, we fed the hikers, and a big thank you to Ms. Kim Ray and Vintage Cafe and Antiques who provided the food. The next day, we met them as they were leaving on their journey and provided them care packages along the way when they arrived to Jonesville, we did photo ops with the Town of Jonesville Council, and I've been actively involved with their meetings each week, and another, I've attended all the Part of Appalachia meetings, I've attended the Clinch and Powell Outdoor Recreation Planning Committee meetings, and they're going to have a public meeting tomorrow at Hino Observatory Center to drop in for the public, and the two projects that they have come up with for Lee County is boat launches at Power River Access Route 666 and Flannery Bridge, so if anybody wants to attend that meeting, you can see the concept plan for those two projects.
And if you remember, the Flannery Bridge is actually a rebuild of the one that they built last year, that hopefully this time they will concrete that one in, so the vehicle ended up in the light, because that's where it ended up. I don't know how far down the river it went, but it went a long way. It was a nice slip though.
And I think that's all that I have to report on, if you all have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Next order, Vic, for public expression.
My name is Debbie Arter, and I'm from P.O.T., Virginia. I had the opportunity to speak with most of you last week, fans down here, the week before. I appreciate all of you taking the time to speak with me about our concerns about our tax rate to be determined. From what I've understood from each of you, all of you really, your plan is to lower the tax rate, and not to burn the county with more than what we can afford, and that's what my goal is in speaking. We're in a situation where we can afford payment, but we know you all are faced with a very, very difficult job to clean up the budget, and it seems we always get back to the school. Each year, they come and ask for more and more and more money, but we don't see more and more results out of giving them money, we don't see a better product come out. We don't understand, maybe, Mr. Pedwell, you can explain this to me, that you had me on the school board about accreditation with conditions, does that mean we are not fully accredited in Lee County schools?
I'm pretty sure it means you're accredited, but you have to make this requirement to continue to be accredited.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure that's what it means. Could maybe absence, I mean, too many absences could knock you out of that.
One of the school board members explained to me that he thought the only problem in the school system is absenteeism.
It's a pretty big one, yeah.
But we do have a truancy officer to take care of that with parents?
Uh, yes, student services.
Okay. The big, the big thing, the concerns we've got is the money keeps going up, I mean, it's coming out of our pockets, and I talked to Todd Killian's office, I talked to Pedwell's office, now, Killian's office, it's one thing, it's a very, you know, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Pedwell? I'm sorry.
I'm a little tired here, because.
Oh, I would not put the shame upon you, sir. Mr. Killian's office was very cordial, and he explained that there's a lot of ways that the board can, and the school board and the Board of Supervisors can go through their office and through Mr. Kilmore's office and ask for funding that does not require a local match, but it's going to take a lot of dividend into the budget. Mr. Kilmore's office, not Mr. Pedwell's. I don't, I think that's part of our problem, I don't know what we can do about it, since he's already been elected, but it seems like there's a roadblock, or they don't want to try to help Lee County, get anything except school funding, that's it, and then they want us to match it. If we don't have it, we can't get blood out of the country, we can't get, we don't have it, we don't have more to pay. So, if the school can get funding, it makes no difference to me if they get it through the top of the ceiling, as long as I don't have to put in a local match that I don't have. So, most everybody I've talked to, that is their concern, is what we have to pay out of pocket, we don't have it, and we want our schools, for what we do have to pay, to produce a good product, we want our kids to be able to read, write, arithmetic, we want to be able to sign their name when they come out of school, I don't think that's a lot to ask, to ask for, and as far as local matches, if it's for academics and something that's truly educational, I don't think anybody has a problem with that. But we do have concern about the rate that's to be determined on our real estate, house, or personal property. But I do appreciate each of you speaking with me this past week and last week, and I do apologize if I'm calling you.
Oh, I bet you're a lot worse.
I doubt it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Seeing none, we'll move on. For recommendations to the board?
Just want to do, I am thankful for Mr. Flannery and Mr. Wright for coming to District One last night, we had about two, two and a half hour meeting with, I didn't count on forty or fifty people down in District One, took questions, handed out budgets, and talked to, talked to several people there, had a good time, I do appreciate their help, and I'm willing to help anybody else that wants to try to do that in their district, be glad too. But I did want to run one thing down that we cut out of this budget last year, we did make some cuts last year, we've been through it line by line, many, many hours, and late nights up here, it sounds like we're going to do it again, but I'm going to run through this, so people here will know. Courthouse renovations, we did not spend a penny in this courthouse other than putting water injury in, I think that was it, am I right?
That's correct.
I mean, this place was built in nineteen and thirty-three?
Oh, sanctions, yeah.
So, no money spent there, and obviously it needs it. Spearhead Trails, thirty-five thousand dollars got cut out of the budget, it got cut though. Junction Center for Independent Living, five thousand dollars, Lonesome Pine Office of Own Youth, fifty-four hundred dollars, Southwest Virginia Food Bank, twenty-five hundred dollars, Brain Injury Services, fifteen hundred dollars, the Health Wagon, five thousand dollars, the Sheriff's Department was budgeted to get a cruiser, forty-five thousand, we cut down the budget. William King Art Center, fifteen hundred dollars, Lee County Library System, we did cut twelve thousand dollars out of that, along with some conversation about the contract we. I told the folks last night, when we got here a year ago, when I got here a year ago, and most everybody here, you know, the governor and the general assembly threw a lot of money at K-12 education, I mean, I don't know the whole totals, but it was in the billions across the state. I mean, I don't know the whole totals, but it was in the billions across the state, which in turn caused the locality here in Lee County to come up with little over two billion dollars in one year. And that's what got us in a paying mode from the get-go. I didn't see it coming, I don't think Dee Dee seen it coming, he was here eight years watching it. We have to deal with, there is a required local effort and there's a required local match. That is two different categories. One you have to pay and one you don't have to pay. So that's what we're in discussion about now with the school system. But I did want to make that clear. It's nobody's fault, the school system at this point. Sounds like after what we went through last year, a lot of yay-yay and back and forth. There is some things that could be cut in the school system, I will tell you that, just like we did in the county. But it's not our job to do so. Once they get funded, that money is totally controlled by the school board. Nobody here can tell nobody at the school board how to spend money. But the required local effort, you can look it up, it's easy to find, is what the county taxpayers has to pay. I just wanted to make that clear, that's all I have.
And that is seventeen percent?
Yeah, it's a big percentage. Their budget's pushing seventy million dollars this year.
Yeah, what we matched of that is seventeen point one-two percent. So what that means is the state funds eighty-three percent and we do, you know, basically seventeen.
Sure.
I think that's what Mr. Waddell was referring to.
And it don't matter who's sitting up here, they're going to pay it. It don't matter if you're Republican, Democrat, whatever you are. That's just the way it is. Now, the rest of it is a different story.
What we had to fund last year, just to add to that...
Six point eight.
Yeah, which is over than the real estate taxes that was collected for the tax year. Just to give you a reference upon that, it's about it.
And the request this year is seven point nine.
Right.
And that's what we're faced with. Again, I'm not against K-12 education at all. I fought for it for eight years, especially in District One. I'd do it again if I was there, but that's how it goes. And I'd be willing to show anybody that wants to sit down and look at it. What we've got here, Josh and I laid it out on the table. We took the whole county budget and gave it to fifty people to look through. Some of them liked it, some of them didn't matter. But yeah, thank you guys for coming last night.
Please do. Court recommendations, county attorney?
Attorney.
County medic group?
Mr. Chair, I've got a couple of things that I need to stick about during some closed session. But I do have a letter that was provided to me by the Town of Pink and Gap. Basically stating their position for what they are wanting to do. I know that they have requested another meeting, you know, to try to figure some EMS stuff out. But I will provide you a copy of what I got today from town manager Harless on that front when the meeting's open. But I know that all that EMS stuff is still underway. Another thing I'd like to inform you about is I got a letter and a packet from the Williams Road Rural Historic District. This comes from the Department of Historic Resources. They actually are going to have a meeting on June the twelfth. And they're proposing adding one of our locations to their historical district, which is the Williams Road Rural Historical District, which is the stuff, you know, basically in District One. It's a real good packet, I just got it, so I didn't have time to make copies of this for you all. But I'll get you some more information on this. But I thought that was pretty exciting to get that listed in that registry. And at that point, this is all I got.
Okay, go ahead.
I just had one thing, and I guess I'd have to say undoubtedly, Mr. Blitso and Mr. McCarty are undoubtedly doing a pretty amazing job where this place would have been probably lined up down to four lane tonight. So I have to give them credit for taking care of our folks down there. Thank you.
And if I may, I do want to add some appreciation from all of you all and myself that they did extend that one more week also. So they are still here, so if anybody is here or they see it on the TV or wherever, they will be here until Friday. There's no appointment necessary. It's a first come, first served basis down here in the conference room. And they've been moving through people rather quickly and we do a consecutive statement of the week.
Proven minutes, April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five recess meeting. April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting.
Motion to approve. Say.
The motion is second, I'm in favor.
Uh.
opposed. Page roll.
Let's make a motion, the Page Eagle.
Let's take it.
Motion is second, I'm in favor.
Uh.
Proven express. Delegation, find a District One behavioral aide.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to come speak to you. My name's Kim Howell and I am the financial officer with planning Mr. Flunkenham Health Services. And I'm trying to get around to all the board of supervisors, city council meeting about this kind of year just to thank you all for your continued support and to let you know what we've done and what new services we've had in the last year. So I'm going to take just a few minutes to run over that with you. And I think everybody got one of our annual reports. I'm going to kind of flip through a few pages of that if you'll just follow along with me. But first, what I want to do is look at page seven. And that just shows all the funding we get in the catchment area, which is Scott County, Lee County, Wise County, and the City of Norton. And as you can see, this is through for fiscal year twenty-four. So last year, we received from the four localities, seven hundred seventy-five thousand, five hundred sixty dollars, or four percent of our budget. And we just, again, we want to thank you for that support, for allowing the financial to allow us to be operational as well. And then on page eight, you can see that in that same catchment area, there were five thousand one hundred and four individuals served in one of our services last year. And usually that's what I talk about and elaborate on that with you all. But this year, I wanted to do something just a little bit different. We were able to start or improve several new services last year. So I wanted to let you all know what those were and how those are affecting the communities and all of us who live through the communities. So if you want to flip back to page one, I want to take just a moment to talk about our mobile crisis service. And that's an expanded service that we were able to do this year now as a service for both adults and children. And on page one here, there's this kind of a story of how mobile crisis services works hand in hand with our other crisis services being offered. In a nutshell, mobile crisis service consists of several mobile crisis response teams that provide rapid response, assessment, and intervention to individuals experiencing mental health crisis. And this is twenty-four seven, and we go to the individual. They don't come see us in an office, we go to where they are. So you'll see that theme throughout here. I'm going to talk about page two, which is our assertive community team. And they are also out in the field and go to where the crisis is or where the need is. But it's ACT, if you hear someone talk about the ACT team, that's the assertive community treatment. And it's a new service that we were able to offer. And there's a success story on page two for that. But this is also team-based, climate-centered, mental health services that provide personalized, comprehensive, and intensive support to individuals with severe mental illness. Many of the ACT services are provided in the community where the consumers live. And the goal is to get long-term sustained recovery and community integration. So we really want to meet them where they're at, treat them where they're at, and not take that sense of community they have and their support systems that they have already. We want to strengthen those right there where they're at. So that's a new thing, kind of different. And then just one more, one more, if I'll share with you. But I do encourage you to read this whole thing. But on page three, this one's just a little bit different than the other two. This is a technology-driven integration that PD1 Partnership with Frontier Health has implemented. And it's the use of Elio's Health. And this is a cutting-edge documentation automation technology to improve quality of care by reducing administrative burdens on providers. So what this can do is it doesn't violate any HIPAA. All consumers give consent for it to be running. And it's AI, so it listens to the session and types up about sixty to seventy-five percent of the note for you. You can read it, add in what you need to add as a therapist or as a clinician. But it takes writing a note from, say, thirty minutes to about ten minutes, and it's more accurate. And actually, I've heard that sometimes they sit and they go with the consumer still in the room, they'll sit and go through the note to make sure that it's accurate from both sides. It has cut down on no-shows by fifty percent. And like I said, has made for a better treatment plan. And it's a very strong recruiting tool when we're trying to recruit new staff. I do encourage you to read these. And then one more thing I wanted to share with you is that PD1 Office and Partnership with Frontier Health has increased personnel investments by over a million dollars for Virginia employees over the last few years. The last couple of years I've come to you and I've talked about the struggles with workforce and hiring. And while we still have some of those, our retention, let's see, at our April board meeting, the retention for Virginia services was at thirteen, the turnover rate was at thirteen percent. So that is really low. So we're quite proud of that. And we're continuing to invest in our employees and communities. So now I'll open it up to any questions that you all may have.
Say that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Tax says to Mr. Buckley, so.
I've come up here to talk about my property taxes. And I apologize, there's not more people here than me, you know, at the rate that I'm getting property taxes. I think I'm going to wake up in the College of Mahalo this morning. I can't pay taxes like this and continue to do it. I just retired, you know, I'm on fixed income. And, you know, there's a seventy-three point nine percent of the population of Lee County that own homes, twenty-six point one rent. So why not come up with a sales tax, a penny? I've noticed petitions going around to raise a sales tax up to the penny. I put three cents on it. It wouldn't bother me to pay three cents in sales tax to lower my property taxes. And then I'm worried about the personal property tax, a one-time thing. They started in nineteen eighty-one, it'd just be a one-time thing. Forty-four years later, we're still paying. And I'm worried about how much they're going to go up considering how much my property taxes have went up. Now, this is ridiculous to raise my taxes as much as they were raised. There's no way my property can be worth what I'm being told it is. I live in front of the quarry in Woodway. Don't I want to live in front of that quarry? I've lived there since nineteen eighty-three. I'm not going to sell it out because nobody's going to want to live there. If I did sign, said I couldn't get nothing out of it. But according to this law, I should have could. It's worth a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars what I've got. But you pay me that, you pay me a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars for what I own? I'm sure you know where I live.
Have you been in and talked to the assessors about it?
Yeah, but see, I think it adjusted down that much.
And your next step will be appealing to the board legalization?
Well, I guess that's what I'll have to do. But, you know, look at putting on the sales tax, that would have people like, you know, nobody's going to drop about thirty cents.
We've done a petition circulating trying to get it, then we've got to get it over the hurdles and get it carried to the state.
Have you signed it?
Yes, I signed it. The one I signed was for one cent, but, you know, three cents wouldn't bother me.
Yeah, so it is here if anybody wants to sign it.
All the citizens of Lee County would shy this burden and not three-quarters of them. And the biggest part of people that own their homes are senior citizens. And a lot of people are on fixed incomes. You know, it's hard to look at this stuff on fixed income. You know, I can't work overtime or do anything like that to get more money to pay my taxes.
Yeah, I'll speak on that. I've been on the board now for ten years and we've tried to get this passed since I've been on the board. We can't do it, it has to be approved by the state and they won't let us do it. That's as simple as that, we tried.
You don't have the authority, we don't. If we did, we'd not have it done, I'm sure, longer than I got here.
Because like I say, it's as far a tax, if you call it taxpayer, I guess that... As far as it gets, because everybody pays.
You know, and plus people that come from other counties or other states will be also contributing to it. You know, it wouldn't just be for three-quarters of the population, you know, the twenty-five percent that don't own homes, they don't have to pay nothing.
And those are things that needs to be took to our...
Of course, what I mean next is the personal property tax. How much is it going to go up whenever I see it in October? Has it been looked at, is it going to be increased?
We're not setting tax rates yet.
There's been no tax rate, no tax rates increase. This is just a property value assessment required by the state through the judicial system, correct, Rob?
Yes.
And we, once all this is completed, we have to set a tax rate. And like Debbie was up there talking, I mean, it can't stay where it's at. It'd just be unfair to the citizens. It's going to be a rollback.
Well, that's the only thing I can say. You know, it's not fair to people, it's not fair to senior citizens, it's not fair to people on fixed income. And it's not fair to everybody that owns property, that twenty-five percent, that people don't pay any property tax at all. Or they may pay personal property taxes, and I'd say there's a lot that don't pay that.
Well, I can tell you what I ran into a whole lot that might have been one of the ones I had out around Pitten there. A lot of the merchants didn't like the idea of that. And I think that's the furthest thing that could ever, ever be. And we've got comments from, well, if they do that, I'll go to Big Stone and trade. I mean, I just don't know how, and you know, that penny thing, like Dee Dee said, tried, tried, may never happen. But you do...
Put it on the ballot, let people vote on it and see what they think about it.
Well, we can't put it on the ballot, it can't be put on the ballot until it gets approved by the state. Our hands are tied, we have no authority whatsoever to do that.
Well, we need to do something because, you know, I'm going to struggle to pay my property taxes. You know, how long can I go without paying taxes before you all put me on the street? You know, that's what I worry about also. You know, I'm raising five grandkids right now because they're cranky. Betty, I run him out, he was worthless. And so I struggle against me raising them.
Thank you.
I'm surprised there aren't more people up here than the people I've talked to.
I know I've already spoken, but can you all tell us what we can do to get that one percent? Who do we put pressure on, who do we file, who do we harass?
The General Assembly. Yeah, I'll go through state legislation, state senate.
Kielgore, period.
Well, if you all will tell us what we can do to help you do your job, tell us what to do.
So the conversation that I remember with Mr. Kielgore, this is off the record, well, not to say off the record, but...
not to say off the record, but there's fifteen votes out there for this, best I can remember is what he said, he took eighteen. And I said, that's three, that ain't me. That's, that's what I heard. But this right here, I had it with me last night, everybody was at that meeting, signed it, it's full page. There is people that support it, I mean, obviously, there's probably some that don't, but if it's a better tax structure than what we're under right now, it would be more fair for this county.
Can we get copies and take them too? Because I mean, I know I'm speaking out of turn because I've already spoken.
Myself personally, I don't know, I've asked that, but...
Many people say they don't know anything about it.
You have to keep it to where people just don't run through, put an emergency meeting on it, get Harry on it.
Yeah, understood.
You have to be able to certify it, that's, that's the key.
Well, many say they don't know anything about it.
We ran the paper, we ran it on social media, we ran the paper, we just need it out there. Need, need people talking about help. Obviously, these are politicians like us, majority rules issue. You get enough people to say, hey, we want this to happen, they might try it. You know, the governor may not want it, it may go that route, but you gotta try it.
Well, I think it was actually, excuse me, well, I got it off my mind, but while, I think it was actually put through legislation, but it was, it could only be spent for school system, is all what you expect.
Yeah, that's what they said.
That's what they had set on it this time.
But, yeah, since we're the poorest county in the state, we're on understanding, and we're not getting a lot of funding from the state unless we match.
And they know that, 'cause they're the ones that designated us as that.
Right, but what do we do with your help?
I mean, I don't know, I, I don't know that's what we...
I think the majority of people don't help the board. We, we want, we see you all got a hard job and that you're working hard to try to find the answers. But if we knew what to do and who to call, I can stay on the phone all day and arrest people in Richmond, I don't, I don't mind to stay on the phone with those people. If you'll just tell me who to call and who to talk to and what to say, how to say.
I would start with Mr. Kilgore's office.
And I would get a list of all of, get a list of every one of them and state legislature there, and, 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 you know, I can get a group and call every single one of them and tell them, you know, where you stand on.
And the plan with this is, you know, there's roughly, what, six, eight thousand votes in this county, that county, but if you get two, three thousand signatures in one county, you invite Mr. Kilgore and whoever else wants to come, Mr. Pigg, this is what the county would like to see happen, what's a, and bring them to one of our meetings here tonight so we could have that discussion. That way, everybody will know whether it's either do or it's not. So that, that's the reason we, we started this, to get support for it, then bring them up to say, hey, these people support this.
Yeah, this board's trying every way in the world to help the taxpayers of the county and to save the county money, save the people money, but our hands are tied when it comes to a lot of things, just like this sales tax thing here. I think we're doing everything that we can, but we kinda get to the end of our chain, that's as far as we can get sometimes, you know?
But sales tax will be fired.
Yes, it will.
Is there any way to get those signatures certified? And if we got the signatures, how else can you get them certified besides those people coming to the courthouse?
If, as long as you're willing to put a, put a statement on the bottom, sign your name, have it notarized that you witnessed these signatures and have verified that they are residents, voting residents in Lake County, that's really all it takes.
You can't, I think you told us it couldn't be like put out at, at the...
You can't just lay it on the counter at a gas station.
At a quick shop or whatever.
Yeah, because, you know, anybody can come in and sign it, they could sign it four or five times, nobody's verifying it. You know, they could write, you know, Tom Smith, Joe Smith, Mary Smith, you know, just keep writing names down. It, it has to be in order for it to be a viable petition, and it has to be certified.
We'll do it. You tell me what to do. We went door to door to door twenty years ago and got our water project done, and everybody all doing.
Well, it takes, it's gonna, it's gonna take a county effort to do it, not just one person that will do it, it's gonna take a bunch of people to do it.
If, if you'll get with me in a few days, I could, I could get you copies that you can certify, if you're with me.
Well, I think, you know, a lot of people say they don't understand it, if we had any other way to get it, get it out there, to the public, and they understood it would put us all in a better position for when we wouldn't receive higher taxes. I think right there's a big word, if they thought we're not gonna have higher taxes if we did this, and there, there's a solution, you know, there's a way to try to get it solved. If people understand it, they're ready to try to save the county and to help you all, help everyone.
Just the three-letter word tax, you're laughing about, about signing.
Roughly, roughly, what's, what does the survey be in that PD gives work? Two grand a year?
Two point one. Two point one million dollars.
And that would be a big help?
And your personal property taxes brings in about two point six. Personal property? Yeah, right, right ahead. It would, it would almost replace all the personal property in this county. All of them.
We were told in nineteen eighty-one it would be a one-time thing. And here we are, forty-four years later, we still gotta go.
It's statewide, all over county that don't have it.
Yes, very well, all counties have it.
It's in the tax code, but the same state code that makes you pay everything else.
Something about the finance, supplemental appropriation.
Mr. Chair, a couple entries that need to be made, just to get some reimbursements and somebody move around where we can spend money appropriately. So there's just a couple of those ones.
Motion to approve?
Say.
Motion to second, I'm third.
All right.
Prove. New business, board appointments. You have a total field?
Motion, say.
Second.
Motion to second, I'm in favor.
All right.
Prove. Murderers command.
Motion to approve, say. I think you have the name.
Yeah, we gotta put a name on it.
Billy K. Coman?
Yeah.
I ain't looking at my paper, I'm just going out with a general, I think that's the name.
Right. I got motion to second, on Billy K. Coman, murder command, coroner, I'm in favor.
All right.
Oppose. On the pound, I'll some use.
So, I'm curious why we are approving that, because we could. I don't even know why. We, we did cut it, and then they came back, because we have two students that are members of that that are going to meetings, and they came, maybe it was the September meeting of last year, and it was at five, if I remember correctly, and we ended up funding it at two, which basically covered the cost of the two youths that were, that were in that program from Lake County. What district is it, does it get the point, or does it matter? There's just one there, it doesn't matter.
She willing to serve another town?
I have not spoken to, to, I would assume that she has to go and tell me that that happened. Make a motion to reappoint.
Say.
Motion in the second, three point, Kate Jesse Williams, lump found office on you, I'm in favor.
All right.
Oppose. Planning permission. Read the motion. Who just gives that?
And I'd make a motion to table, I haven't been told.
That motion to table, I'm in favor.
All right.
Second.
Say.
I'm in favor.
All right.
Prove. Spirit hit trail later.
Motion to table.
Second. I'm in favor.
All right.
I'll oppose. Attorney as a comedian, I'd like a motion to table that one as well.
I'll say.
Motion second, I'm in favor.
All right.
I'll oppose.
Mr. Chair, just for FYI, the appointments that we've got coming up in June, if you'll notice, that is those two students that were members of the lump found office on you, those are historically seniors, so they will be graduating, I'm actually working now to try to get nominations for that. And there's also another one on the, on the library board. I got most of my regional library, I actually have a letter requesting the board consider a person for that for, for next year, so I'll put it with the next packet.
In what district?
It would be just the same district. How tall did you copy it?
I've got some paper too there, they approached me.
Okay, it may be the same person.
Looks to Shaver Ford, Roman.
Yeah. It may be the same person.
And he's having to, she moved out of district two, and it's, I think she is a, I think I read there in the packet that she's not wanted to do it again anyway.
Waste management agreement?
Mr. Chair, in your packet, there is the extension agreement for the disposal except for waste, with waste management. We spoke about this like a couple of meetings ago, went through the negotiations with waste management, and I am asking permission to sign this extension.
I'd like a motion, I'd like you to sign that extension.
Say.
Motion second, I'm in favor.
All right.
Prove. President Madre?
All right. Mr. Chair, in your packet, there is a copy of the regional jail inmate population report, of which I am extremely proud to say that that number has decreased a whole bunch on the state responsible inmates that, that the county has. There is also a copy of what they're projecting their budget to be for next year, just to give you an FYI, I do have a final figure on that. The regional jail is on an estimated, it's gonna cost us about a million dollars more next year than it did this year. To compound that large increase in the budget, when we did true-up last year, we actually were under budget a little bit based on the number of inmates we had. We are not gonna experience that this year, but we have been over budget and may end up having this up a little bit. All of that information is, is in your packet.
That should move us to a couple, total cost of around, what, three million dollars for this year?
Yes, like three point one.
Three point one million dollars.
It's, it's in there, hang on, I did put it with that. Please. Oh, sorry, it's three, three million, eighteen thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars and seventy-six cents. That's, that's the budgeted cost for this year, twenty-five, twenty-six. They also did a calculation on what it, what the state responsible inmates are, that several of them have been requesting that at some point in time, that the numbers are in there, it's the thing that looks like a spreadsheet, I'll, I'll go over those numbers with you. There's been a lot of question, and even I had had questions on it, it's a state responsible inmate and the state's paying that, and they should be paying more, but if you did run the numbers on paper, and I've tried everywhere in the world to disprove it, but if you run the numbers on paper, it's still saving money for them to be there. And that, that flies against everything that I have ever known in my own entire life about what a number should work out to be, but that is true, and I can't dispute it.
Well, it would be because of one thing, because of the debt service and, and the amount you pay per, per inmate.
Yeah, and, and what happens is the, the number of, there's not enough state responsible inmates in that system in each locality to warrant not having as many officers on hand. The amount of food that they have to produce is not really a whole lot different, you know, the whole volume, and, and so it really boils down to a few services and food, but it, when I got those numbers, 'cause I had complained about them for, what, about eight, nine months now, and, and it really shocked me the way those numbers worked out. So obviously, having some of these people in the works program helps offset some of this cost. The more people that we can have qualified into the works program, the better off our budget will be. And you had a conversation with the Commonwealth attorney, I know, about having, getting people qualified to be in the works program. Yes. And we are looking into trying to do more of that. We are, actively. For sure. Actively. Okay. Yeah, we're, we're asking that, that, I, I think that's a big step toward lowering some of that cost. Yeah, the, the big issue and one of the hurdles that we had with, with looking at that, it's a double-edged sword. But you could have somebody that would qualify for the works program, they may or may not want to do the works program, and you put them in there, and if they don't fulfill the agreement to be in the works program, they could actually be incarcerated for up to a year. So you have to be real careful to ensure that everybody that you put in that program will complete the program without defaulting any, because as long as you went from a three month cost for them to be in there to a year cost, you've really gotta be careful. But the Commonwealth attorney has been real good to have discussion with that with me, and we are actively working to try to do something.
Where does that fee go to that those people have to pay to get in the program? They have to pay, is it like fifty dollars a month?
Yeah, it goes in their general fund.
It goes in, okay. I didn't know if it went directly to the works program or the jail over there.
So it turns, an inmate that would go to jail that we would have to pay fifty-three dollars a day? Yes. To them paying the county fifty dollars per month? Plus working for the county. Yeah, all of those orange bags that you see on the side of the road, and then some other intangible things that, that the public don't see, there, that we would have to pay to get done, there's a lot of work that that program can do, and the more people that would be in it, the better off we'd all be.
And a lot of it depends on the charges too.
Yes.
That some of them are disqualified automatically, but some of them, the reason they can't get out there is because of the plea agreements that they make.
Right.
That they can't get out of all the works and that. So those, those are some things that I personally think need to be tweaked a little bit before we get more out of it.
Drugs is a major problem. Yeah, I, and I will tell you, if you had any ideas, I wasn't gonna do anything that, that, you know, I'm, some things I know something about.
It's all about plea deal.
Uh-huh.
It's all about the plea deal.
It is, yeah. And, but if anybody's got any, any thoughts, a little, you know, something outside the box or whatever, I'll be more than happy to, to talk about it, 'cause I learned something today.
Grab a phone.
Mr. Chair, last minute's meeting, the board requested that I put this on the agenda to, to discuss the possibility of adding the gravel phone back into the budget. I didn't know if you all wanted to discuss that or wait until the, the, you know, we were actually in the, in the budget workshops to try to do this, but I think one of the big stickers on this was just to ensure that if this was added back into the budget for the gravel phone, that the appropriate requirements that the whole board has, you know, be required to be met before we would actually dip into any of this.
I myself would rather talk about that in the budget session, 'cause we've got some, I already got some major issues going on with gravel in the county.
Okay.
Like we're gonna have to deal with, so. That's just me.
I agree. Yeah, I'm fine with that, it, it's just a thing that needs to be talked about, it's been...
It's been done for so many years and just appropriately ended, it's, it's pretty tough to explain to people. Obviously, funding is the biggest reason, I think, but I, I do think it's been abused in the past. And we need to put some guidelines on it if we're going to have twelve hundred bucks a piece to try to help with the gravel here and there. There need to be guidelines of things like three houses, uh, that, that would get benefit from it, stuff like that. But I'm, I'm waiting to talk about the details.
Mr. Chair, last meeting, uh, the board voted to increase the hangar rent on normal hangers to a hundred and eighty-five dollars. Uh, this is one of those things, sometimes I don't know everything. There are two hangers that are larger that we are charging a, a bigger amount for because they are larger hangers. And I would need, um, the board to take some kind of action to equalize the hangar rent. I looked at those hangers. I would recommend with the charges that we did have, uh, on those and, and what the new rent rate is, I think it would be appropriate to up that rent on any new lease to the two hundred and ten dollar range. But I won't entertain any motion, I just need to block them out.
Are you saying after these people move out?
Or their leases, the leases every year. So I'm kind of, if the lease comes due, then we would, we would...
Is there a difference right now in the two sizes?
There, there, there was a difference in the two sizes when you took action last month to change that one.
What was the difference?
Um, it went from the, what was it, a hundred and fifty to one eighty-five? And these hangers were one eighty-five. So I think the appropriate change. Now they're all the same and we've got two that are bigger, so...
So we added thirty-five dollars?
Yeah, so I was thinking if we went with the two-ten, that would be, you know, somewhere in the appropriate range.
I'm fine with that.
I'll make a motion to raise the rent on larger hangers to two-ten.
Second.
Motion second, I'm favoring.
Aye.
Air evac training session, Lee County Airport.
Yeah, I received a request from, uh, Michelle Story, who is the, uh, basically the lead for air evac eighty-eight. They're wanting to use the airport on July the eighth for a training session. Um, well, I, this is the second time I've had this request since becoming county administrator. So, uh, I, I'm asking the board, asking for two things. I would love to be able to just go ahead and schedule these things with those as long as the, the, uh, it meets our schedules. Uh, just to be able to handle this without having to bother you all with it. But I, I did make a motion to allow them to use the airport on July the eighth for their, for their training event. And if you'd make a motion where I could just schedule that with people, I, I would appreciate it.
I'm making a motion, we approve this training event and I make a motion also to, uh, allow Rodney to do that.
Second.
We need to...
This is second for you.
Hey, I'm just trying to get through this.
You could probably do that as a whole one motion, but it would be better separating for the queen.
Make a motion, we allow this training event to take place at the Lee County Airport, there you go.
Second.
Motion second, I'm favoring.
Aye.
I'll oppose.
Also make a motion that, rather than be able to handle these situations, that'll have to bother us.
Second.
Aye.
I'm favoring.
Aye.
And then the last little piece of business, uh, actually that's what I'm going to go into phone session over. We want to debate how you feel in phone session.
I'd make a motion, go into, uh, phone session. Two point two dash three seven eleven A one, deployment personnel. And vesting you of public funds, two point two, three seven eleven A six.
I'll say.
Make a motion second, I'm favoring.
Aye.
Prove.